All right, so we are picking up on page 25 for Lesson Number Two. Looks like the lessons are pretty well the same size. Probably will take us two nights for each lesson. That's what the first one was, and I think that will probably apply to this second one too. It looks like that may be the trend as we go through. But Lesson Number Two is "Tested by Fiery Trials." And each and every one of us, you know, we would, we could probably attest to some trial that we've been through. And some of them may have been self-inflicted. That may have at least led up to it. And some of it may have been for, as the Scripture we'll get to in a minute, would say for righteousness sake. You know, the Bible says that there will be times most likely that each and every one of us will fall under some type of persecution. I think that Christianity is probably in our lifetime, probably under the verge of more persecution now than I can ever remember. It is, I just don't ever remember a time that it was completely offensive to be a Christian. But it is, but the Word says it will be. The Word says it will be offensive to people. So fiery trials, a painful experience, just a definition here. A painful experience intended to determine the performance quality and usefulness of a person. So, you know, God allows things to happen. God doesn't always do them, but sometimes, I mean, you take Job for example. You know, the devil came and says, hey, the only reason that old Job loves you is because you're so good to him. And he says, no, he loves me because he loves me. And then finally devil said, go ahead, do whatever you want, but you can't take his life. And he took everything but his life. And Joe questioned, you know, he asked God a lot of questions. He got a little frustrated, but he went through a lot of trials. But some things to think about. Without trials, we'll not know our weaknesses. We won't. You will not. And also without trials, you'll not know your strengths. I mean, that's, you take, I remember when I played football. I mainly got beat up on the football field because I was about third string quarterback for Leesville High School, which meant I ran scout team offense against the starting defense. And nobody loved anything better than to hit the quarterback. And the fortunate thing is I could outrun most of them. So, but I remember Kavika Pittman, big old guy. He played for Mac Nees and then he went on to play for Dallas. And he was considered a headhunter on special teams. He was just the sweetest guy. He was about six eight and never would tackle me, never would hit me. But boy, they put me through some trials there. But we don't know our weaknesses. You know, we practiced and we practiced. We had two a days in the summer, but we still didn't know where our strengths were and our weaknesses were until we faced a trial. Till we went up against opposition. It's the same thing in your life in Christ. If you aren't going out and utilizing the faith that you say you have, I mean, the difficult times, that is the time to be most impressive to Christ of your faith. Or to be revealed the weakness of your faith. So again, without trials, we'll not know our weaknesses. Without trials, we'll not know our strengths. And of course, James, chapter one, let's turn there for a minute. And I've got several reference verses. So we just kind of will roll with our pace and see where we end up there. So James had had something pretty significant to say about joy and trials. James, chapter one, verses one through six. James right up front, and we see Paul did this a lot too. He said, James, a servant of God and of the Lord Jesus Christ to the twelve tribes which are scattered abroad greet. He says hello. Now he tells you, and he's talking to Christians. My brethren, count it all joy when, he says, if, when you fall into diverse temptations, knowing this, that the trying of your faith worketh patience. But let patience have her perfect work, that you may be perfect or mature and entire, wanting nothing. If any of you lack wisdom, let him ask of God, that give it to all men liberally, and that breadeth not, and it shall be given. But let him ask in faith, nothing wavering. For he that wavereth is like a wave of the sea, driven with the wind, tossed to and fro. And that's when our faith is weak. You're going to be pushed around, you're going to be tossed to and fro with all kinds of trials, and you're not going to manage them very well. So in truly sincerely seeking the Lord, we can count it all joy. And we'll be able to see that coming. We read about Paul and Peter went through trials like that. And they came to a time in their life, they considered it all joy. So page 26 there, there's an opportunity. And I've heard this said, friend of mine down in Ragged, really good friend of mine, brother in Christ, who talks a lot about suffering. His wife has been battling cancer. And it's just one of those things that kind of maybe shove it back a little bit, maybe keep it at bay for a while, but sooner or later she will succumb to it unless the Lord decides to perform a miracle. But there's an opportunity for great, great ministry in suffering. There is, in suffering for righteousness sake. And you know, now, now, not that her cancer or whatever has anything to do with righteousness, but the opportunity she has to serve God through her sickness. To serve God in her sickness, to continue to love the Lord in her sickness. And you know, we probably all know somebody that really stands out. But there's an opportunity for great ministry in suffering. We need to always keep that in mind. So first figure there, chapter four. It's the Bible focus of kicking off this next lesson here. Says, beloved, do not think it strange concerning the fiery trial which is to try you. He says, don't. Why are you so surprised when bad things happen? Read through the Bible. I mean, Matthew, Mark, Luke, John, Peter, Timothy, I mean, Samson, you just go down, David, Joseph. You go down through, they all had bad things happen. And I love Jesus, or excuse me, Joseph's. And of course, if you study the life of Joseph, he is considered a type of Christ. The things that happened in his life. And what did he say to his brothers? He said his brothers, hey, what you meant for evil, God meant for good. Now that is what the Scripture uses the word perfect, which is a reference to maturity. That is being mature in Christ. So beloved, do not think it strange concerning the fiery trial which is to try you, as though some strange thing happened to you. But rejoice to the extent that you partake of Christ's suffering. So you're suffering with him. A lot of Scriptures reference that. That when his glory is revealed, you may also be glad with exceeding joy. If you are reproached for the name of Christ. See, a lot of times, again, our suffering is self-inflicted, many, many times. Maybe not something that we done directly, but it may be a poor decision that we continue to make. You know, and things don't work, don't work, don't work. You know what the definition of insanity is, right? Doing the same thing, yet expecting a different outcome. So on their part, he said, he is blasphemed, but on your part, he is glorified. But let none of you suffer as a murderer, or thief, an evil doer, or as a busybody. So he's differentiating different kinds of suffering in the Scriptures here. Peter is. So suffering for Christ's sake. And he said, but now don't, don't get caught up in suffering as a murderer, a thief. And you say, oh, gosh, I ain't none of those things, or a busybody. You know, a lot of people like to go around talking, fussing, griping, backbiting, talking about people. Can't believe the preacher did this, can't believe the preacher did that. Or I can't believe old so-and-so did this. You believe what she wore when she sang that song up there. And I mean, that's busybody. That's doing this. You ain't lifting up Christ, I promise you, when you're doing that. So he gets all the way from a murderer to talking about things you don't have any business talking about. And we just need, sometimes we just need to put our head down and serve. Yet if anyone suffers as a Christian, let him not be ashamed. But let him glorify God in this matter. How many times will something happen and one of your unsafe friends, or maybe a really black, backslidden friend, that comes and says, well, where's your God now? Where's your God now? I mean, how's a God of love let something like that happen? I mean, we'll get that thrown in our face often. But let, you know, don't be ashamed. But let him glorify God in this manner. Therefore, let those who suffer according to the will of God commit their souls to him in doing good as to a faithful Creator. So again, suffering for the cause of Christ. There's a difference. And he talks about two different types of suffering in these Scriptures right here. So just a few things to pull out of what's written. And if you've got a comment or question, anytime, just stop me. And Matt throw something? My old geography teacher had an eraser. And man, he had pinpoint accuracy with that thing if he needed your attention. I'd say his name, but he might watch the video sometime. I love him though. Most of us, we ended up being good friends after it was all over, because he threw an eraser at me quite a few times. Most of us do all we can to avoid times of trouble and suffering. The truth however is that Christians have always been persecuted through the ages, always. To greater or lesser degrees in a variety. And if you study this time, in Peter's time, Christians were being openly burned alive. And that ain't happening in the United States, but that kind of stuff still happening in other countries even today. Catch you with the Word of God. I mean, some places it's, there's such persecution, just to have, you'll tear out a page. You'll tear out a page, and then we can get together. Because they can't dare get caught doing, not forget who it was. It was a missionary. It was traveling somewhere, and they ended up coming, going through a checkpoint. And they were, they were carrying Bibles across the line, the country line. And if they were to get caught with them, they were going to jail. And I forget who that was that shared that with me. And they, they got inspected, but they never looked through their stuff. And of course, God, you know, provided that protection there. Much persecution. So persecution, I mean, it's inevitable. If you're living for Christ. Of course, if you're a Christian and not living for Christ, the devil ain't going to fool with you no whole lot because you already doing what he wants you to do. You're turning people away from the Lord. You're claiming to be a Christian, maybe even showing up to church, but you're not living like it outside of it. And the devil's like, got him where I want him, got her where I want her. So his, you know, I don't think the devil's goal is to get you to go to hell. He's trying to get you to get other people to go. That's his goal. That's his goal. Think about that. So what are you for taking in? Persecution is inevitable. It is not a matter of, a matter of if a person will be cursed, persecuted, but when, how, and where. Kind of like what it say about bull riders. You know, it ain't matter of if they're going to get hurt, it's when and how bad. And of course, most of them, they come, get back, get back on. I remember we lived in North Louisiana, young, young man riding bulls. He had stepped on, completely crushed, tore up one lung, collapsed the other. Only a miracle that he lived. Of course, he toughened up, healed up, aired over, and got back on. But we, sometimes, we don't, we're not quite as tough and thick as we think we are. The important issue is how a Christian faces persecution. So look at, somebody turn to First Peter 3:15 for me. First Peter 3:15, somebody, who wants that? All right, Brother Corey. Brother Corey's going to give it.
Yeah, I get it.
Pressure's on.
Says, but sanctify the Lord God in your hearts, and always be ready to give a defense to everyone who asks you a reason for the hope that is in you with meatness and fear.
So you need to be ready to give an answer. You know, you take, there's, again, there's persecution going on right now. And you know, I don't, you know, again, we kind of ain't talked about COVID much in a while, and that's good. But some people say, oh, it's the mark of the beast, you know? It's not. But now is it pointing in that direction? Yes, I think it is. And some people have, you know, had really strong opinions about that. But are you ready and prepared to stand and give an answer for your life in Christ? As to why you will do something or why you will not do something? Because people are gonna, it's gonna come to the point, why, well, why are you willing to lose your job over whatever? That's stupid. I mean, that's what the government, you know, may push us to do at some point, to denounce your faith. I mean, it's happened before, it's happened in the past, and it's generally the government that does it. Are you willing? Are you ready? And then when, when your friend comes to you and says, well, that's the dumbest thing I've ever heard of. Are you ready to give an account? Are you ready to give an answer for whatever that may be? Or are you just gonna, you know, do like the old fish, you know? Just head on downstream with the crowd, with the crowd, with the group. So it's inevitable. So nearly, just some statistics here. Nearly 2 billion Christians alive today. One in 10 is experiencing significant persecution for his or her faith. So one in 10, about 10% are experiencing. So a few things here. Social standing, political power. Now this is getting real close to right here in November 2021. Social standing, political power, economic status. Christianity is perceived to be a threat to all three. It's perceived to be a threat to all three. I mean, I, it's blown me away. Even preachers have stood against the Texas abortion law to protect babies. Past six weeks, that's what Texas has put in place. It's been through about three rounds, the Supreme Court has been upheld every time so far. But there have been preachers come out against that. That's wrong. That is, I mean, if we can't agree on the importance of the sanctity of life, we're not going to be able to get much further when it comes to the things of the Lord, because he really clear on the importance of life. So it is, it is perceived to be a threat to social standing, political power, economic status. It challenges the way people get and spend money. It confronts those who misuse power, proclaims a higher authority than earthly kings. And it demands that social barriers be removed when it comes to a person's standing before God. It is a threat to everyday life. It is a threat to people that are not of God. They do not understand it, and it is offensive to them. But the Bible says it will be when we're truly living for it. Peter gave this response to persecution. You know what he said? Rejoice in it. Rejoice if you're truly being persecuted for righteousness sake. Top of page 27 there. If a Christian has to suffer for Christ, he must do so in a way that his suffering brings great glory, greater glory, honor, and exaltation to God. So think about that. You know, if you've been through some type of suffering because of your faith. I mean, I've gotten frustrated, and there's silly things that happen. I ain't never really been persecuted because of my faith. I mean, I've been ridiculed, I've been made fun of, but nothing big. Nothing big at all. But what if it does happen? Are you going to bring greater glory and honor and exaltation to God? Only suffering for the cause of one's belief in Christ. In Christ, Jesus warrants God's rewards. So a lot of times, we want to be rewarded for some suffering that ain't got anything to do with your faith. And we think, well, God ought to do this, because, boy, I went through that there. So don't be fooled about, again, the two different things. And Peter talked about the two different types of suffering. You know, sure, if you murder somebody, you're going to suffer for that. Well, you should have, just according to, you know, where the political winds are blowing, right? But what should Christians do when they face persecution for Christ? Refuse to be ashamed of Christ? Give even greater witness to the glory and love of God? And make a renewed commitment in their hearts and minds to do good in the name of Christ? You know, a lot of us, you know, we'll pray and pray and pray and ask God, and ask God, and ask God. We'll make great strides and committing. And then the next thing you know, we fall away. When God meets that. And the thing is, you know, God knows that you're going to walk away. He knows it, and he still loves you. And, but because he knows there's still that, you know, there's still that chance you're gonna, you're gonna turn back. He's going to give you every chance, every opportunity in the world. So how do you respond to your persecutors? And remember, they need Jesus too. Sometimes we forget that aspect of somebody that's persecuting us. And then we turn around and step in their shoes, and we become a persecutor. And we forget that Jesus's blood was shed for them too. I don't care how bad they are. And I've shared this with you before. It's a very, it's a really strong example. A guy that I used to know worked at Angola. And they some, they some bad people in Angola. And a man was in prison for killing a child with a screwdriver. And that guy said, how in the world can God forgive him? He said, I cannot forgive him. I said, it's because you ain't God. God can forgive that man. If that man truly seeks God's forgiveness, then God can forgive that man. You've got to remember, you know, and I've heard, you know, God died for somebody just like Saddam Hussein and people like that. And we need to wrap our mind around, that is how loving our God is. So don't, don't let things happen, and then we turn around and become the persecutor. So trials, they're going to come. So Jesus died for all of them. I love this little example down here and an application for today. Here, I didn't put my little clock up here today, so y'all have to get me back too long. So Pliny, Pliny, I don't know how to say that, but the Roman governor in Asia Minor, this was a few days ago, during the second century, was puzzled by Christians who were brought before him for trial. And you think of Jesus before Pilate. He wrote about his experience, experiences to Emperor Trajan. Asking for advice, his letter has become famous in history. He wrote that a certain unnamed Christian was brought before him, and finding little fault in him, he was threatened of him by saying, I will banish you. He said, you can't. In, for the entire world is my father's house. So then the governor says, I will slay you, and you will be belated from eternity. Said the governor, you can't answer the Christian. My life's hid in Christ, hid with Christ the God. I will take away your possessions, the governor says. You can't. My treasure's in heaven. I will drive you away from man, and you will have no friend left. Says final threat, the Christian replied, you can't. For I have an unseen friend from whom you are not able to separate me. That's, that's where we need to seek to get to. That's the Psalm 23, you know? I won't fear any of you. That is, that is what he's talking about there. If you had faced this governor, what would you have said when he threatened? And not only in, you know, in times like this, they didn't threaten, because Rome, Romans were known. That's why, that's why Jesus was taken to the Romans, because they meant business. And they were the really good, making people suffer and doing really mean things. And the guy's like, you can't take any of that from me, because you didn't give it to me. So you can't take it away from him. So where would we be if we were asked something like that? So top of page 28 there. So four words he used there, would-be punishments. Of course, by the world standards. And you know, you think that the example that Jesus said, in the blink of an eye, he could have took them all out. But he kept quiet, and he suffered, and he shed his blood, and was beaten, and punished. So four, four would-be punishments here that that Roman governor talked about. Banishment, death, loss of possessions, loss of friendship. Any one of those would make most of us turn our back on Christ. If we were honest, if we were truthful. If they threatened to take your friends away, you'd say, well, okay, I'll do it. Most of us would give in. And those times are coming. We may not face it, but our little ones might. Because it's, we need to be preparing them though for these times. And we need to be showing them just how serious and how important it is to get our focus on Christ. We have to. But, but I mean, and again, I know I use the examples, but we will spend, and I've got friends that are doing tens of thousands of dollars, hundreds and hundreds and thousands of miles to hope they might get a scholarship for college on travel sports. But can't hardly get them to come and be with their child for Sunday morning, Sunday school, Sunday night, Wednesday night. But we'll do all these other things that have nothing to do with eternity. And again, not, not all of them are bad things in and of itself, but we, we put them on a level that they shouldn't be in. So supplementary Scriptures here, and we'll, we'll just cover a couple of questions under this. So Peter also wrote this about suffering and trials. Is this, in this, you greatly rejoice, though now for a little while, if need be, you have been grieved by various trials? That the Genesis genuineness, excuse me, of your faith be much more precious than gold that perishes, though it be, is tested by fire, may be found to praise, honor, and glory at the revelation of Jesus Christ, whom having not seen you love, though now you do not see him, yet believe in. You rejoice with joy inexpressible, full of glory, receiving the end of your faith, the salvation of your souls. And you know, we should ask ourselves, is Jesus enough? Somebody want to turn to Romans 8:18? Melissa, my Melissa? And Philippians 3, give you a few verses here. Philippians 3, 8 through 14. Someone want that one? All right, Phyllis.
Philippians 3, 8 through 14.
You got yours, Melissa?
Yes. Romans 8:18.
Right.
For I reckon that the suffering of this present time are not worthy to be compared with the glory which shall be revealed in us.
So mostly, most people agree that Paul wrote this to the Roman Christians. And he says, you know, you've got to put things in perspective. The sufferings of this present time don't hold a candle to what's to come. The glory, the goodness, the praise, the honor, the glory, all these things. And then, and then Paul here to the church of Philippi. Go ahead, Phyllis.
Gaye Galus, and I count all things but loss for the excellency of the knowledge of Jesus Christ, my Lord, for whom I have suffered the loss of all things, and defound him but done that I made in Christ, and defended him, not having my own wickedness, but that which is through the faith of Christ, the righteousness which is of God by faith, that I may know him and the power of his resurrection, and the fellowship of his sufferings, being made comfortable unto his dead, if by any means I might attain unto resurrection of the dead, not as though I had already attained either, were already perfect, but I follow after, if then I may apprehend for that which I am also apprehended of, Christ Jesus. Brother, and I count not myself to have apprehended, but this one thing I do, forgetting those things which are behind, and reaching forth into those things which are before. I press toward the mark for the prize of a high calling of God in Christ Jesus.
So I love, you know, I think a lot of people lifted Paul up. And I don't know that there's many, if any, more humble than Paul. And he all the time was, you know, I feel like, you know, in conversation, people saying, well, Paul, gosh, you've been through this, and you did this, and this, and this. And I mean, what did he say? He says, man, this ain't worth any more than done. Who? He says, all this suffering don't mean a thing. He said, it's all worth it, I may win Christ. And then winning Christ is bringing other people to Christ. He said, man, it's worth every ounce of suffering. He said, it's worth the penalty he got to be stoned to death, yet he survived. It was worth the shipwreck that he got. It was worth the snake bite that he got. It was worth the multiple times thrown in jail that he went through. He says, man, none of that means anything. He said, I get to do this for Christ. I get to suffer with him. That was Paul's attitude. We have to look in the Word and realize and put in perspective what the Lord has been through and done for us. So we'll go this last one here, top of page 29. So Peter saw no comparison between any loss a person might suffer through persecution and the lasting value of genuine faith. So is your faith more valuable than anything you might lose during a time of persecution? Think about that. Is your faith more valuable than anything you might lose? Are you willing to step back from your faith to get a raise? Are you willing to step back from your faith to get a sponsor for your business or whatever? Are you willing to do that? Those are things that we really need to think about. I don't know where Donnie Gay stands now, but I know at one time, and I've shared this before, he turned, he got saved later in his life. Buckwaze was one of his biggest sponsors, millions of dollars. He cut them off. He says, no, I don't want that to represent me anymore. Because that brings no positive light on the ministry that God's given me. I don't know where he's, that was years ago. I don't know where he stands today. I hope he still stands there. But is your faith more valuable than anything you may lose during a time of persecution? And again, just one verse there, verse seven, Philippians, chapter four, verse seven. And the peace of God which passes all understanding shall keep your hearts and minds through Christ Jesus. I mean, if you keep your focus and you do things for Christ, for Christ, then you are going to have peace. The peace of God, not of the world, not of wealth, but of God. And that passes all understanding. Nobody can get that. Nobody will be able to wrap their mind around. That's when you need to be able to say, "I do it for the sake of Christ. I do it for the cause of Christ." And that's what we really need to be thinking about when it comes to, you know, the topic that we'll continue to talk about, tested by fiery trials. You know, some of us have been through, maybe some, and we've had opportunities to stand for Christ, and maybe we made a bad decision. And just like I've told you many times, if you've got another breath to take, you have an opportunity to repent. You have an opportunity to say, "Lord, I blew that. Will you forgive me?" And I promise you, every time. People say, "Yes, I will." Because that's what he taught us to do. That's what he said, and it's in Matthew, right? Seventy times seven? You know, because the custom of forgiveness. And we'll stop right there in the book. So the custom of forgiveness was three times. So what, was it Peter, right, that was talking to Jesus? And, you know, three was the custom, right, of the day, not of the Lord. And so Peter said, "What if he keeps sin against me? What, I gotta forgive him seven times? He's been a bit of a smart." Jesus says, "No." He's thinking, seven represented perfection. That number did, in Scripture. And he says, "No, seventy times seven." Peter didn't have a whole lot to say after that because seventy times seven represents infinity. So how many times do you need awful forgiveness? Every time it's asked. Is that a tough pill to swallow? It absolutely is. But is that a calling that the Lord has given every one of us? I mean, has he forgiven you? Is there anything you've ever done that he has not forgiven you of? If he hasn't, it's because you haven't asked. That is the example that the Lord has set for us. When we face whatever persecution, when we have an opportunity to forgive. And it's harder for us to forget than it is to forgive. Sometimes that's the tough part to get over, and we have to deal with that. But we have to be a forgiving people. And that may be the fireish trial that we have to go through just to be able to forgive. And until you can forgive, it is gonna boil, and it is gonna fester, and it is gonna leak, and it's gonna hurt and cause problems. So we're gonna stop right there. And so that's, be your homework, pick up on page 29, that next little scripture there, First Peter 3, 13 through 17. And we'll just go wherever far we get. Any last comments, thoughts?
Jason, after all the trials it's mentioned in the eighth chapter of Romans, right again, it says that if you continue in the faith, you will be more than confident.
Yep.
That's not exactly the way it's working.
Well, so many, that continuing in the faith is a tough one, you know? We've all stumbled. But when we get back where we're supposed to be, the Lord gives us that strength, that confidence. And what the Bible says, "Soar with wings like eagles." There's nothing more majestic than watching an eagle. No buzzard don't fly pretty as an eagle. But while you're watching eagle, it's a beautiful thing. Let's stand. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you thanking you, Lord, for each and every one that's here again. Lord, I pray that we will look at ourselves through the scriptures, in the scriptures, Lord, and see what is in our life that we may have put on a pedestal above you, maybe beside you. We need to put in its proper place, Lord. May our perspective always look through the eyes of your Word. And I pray for each and every person here tonight. In Jesus' name.